I'm going to call this meeting to order. If I can get my colleagues up here for me. Thank you for joining us tonight at a Board of Education meeting. Item 4.0, callback to order, Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance will be led by members of the academic Deca... Wait, I can't even read that right now. Decathlon, did I pronounce that right? Team from the New Technology High School. I probably did say that wrong and I'm sorry. I don't have decathlon, sorry. I don't have my glasses on, so it's... Am I going to come up to the microphone? Where are my glasses?
This is the land of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, stay there. Stay right there.
Did I pronounce it right? I got it, decathlon, I got it, I got it.
Tonight, we honor Sacramento New Technology High School's 2016 decathlon team for their hard work, dedication to learning, and for bringing pride to their campus and the district. Student decathletes compete against other schools by taking 30-minute multiple-choice tests in the subjects of economics, language and literature, music, science, art, mathematics, and social studies. In addition, each team member gives a planned four-minute speech, a two-minute impromptu speech, participates in a seven-minute interview, and has 50 minutes to write an essay. Finally, the entire team competes in the high-energy super quiz. It's a lot of work and teams spend months preparing. This year's topic, India, was especially challenging. Not yet a top-scoring team, new technology can take pride in its team's diversity and opportunity academic decathlon provides for diverse learners to compete in this rigorous college-level competition. For these reasons, I'm proud to recognize tonight's stellar students, and I'll read off their names. Marco Branigan Mendoza, Alex Durazo, Julian Fomel Geitero, Janessa Jones, Carly Kemp, Brown Lockwood, Hero Manzano, Sean McCollum, Trevor McKenzie, Juan Roa, Miguel Perez, Alondra Santana Isidro, Ruby Santana Isidro Lise, and Janay Vest Lee. So these are our New Tech High School Academic Decathlon Team. Thank you. I have certificates for you, but if you'd like to say a few words while I figure out how to get down there carrying all this stuff.
Daryl?
Can I say a few things about them?
Are you part of the team? No, you're their leader.
Yes, firstly, would like to say something.
Oh yeah, Daryl, it's pronounced Chewy.
And I, well, I took my glasses off, so...
Good evening, Board members, learners, community members and families. I am Senna Davis, a teacher at Sacramento New Technology High School. For the past three years, I alongside my partner Jennifer Coyle, who could not make it tonight, have had the joy of coaching these wonderful learners for New Tech's Academic Decathlon Team. I think they explained it, but for those of you who don't know what Acadeca is, it's where a team of students compete against other high schools in our county in 10, that's the Deca part, academic subjects around a theme, which the theme was India. In addition to this competition, they received, they all received Sac State College credit for their time and effort, which tells you the stuff they learned is pretty tough, college-level curriculum. Can I just brag for a minute? We Sac New Tech are a small school. We have around 250 kids total. We are competing against large high schools in the county that have 2,000-plus kids. The competition has usually around 25 schools competing, and we are the smallest, and yet we've come in the top 10 for the past two years. A little more bragging, last year and this year, we had students meddling in gold, silver, and bronze categories, with this year, three-year competitor Sean McCollum earning a silver in science.
Yay, Sean.
By the way, I'm his science teacher, so that makes my heart smile. It dawned on me, we have something unique about us. This year, a Sacramento Bee reporter asked to talk to a few of our kids after the competition because she noticed they were of Latino descent, and that is a rarity at these events. I personally see them as kids who challenge themselves, who work incredibly hard, who ask difficult questions, who collaborated together, who studied until they were crazy, who had fun while learning college-level curriculum. However, the community sees them as something different, non-white. While I want to thank them for their role in breaking the norms of a still unequal society, I want to really thank them for a great team effort of learning, which is hard to do no matter what you look like or what your background is. They are truly amazing people who know a lot about India, a lot about 10 academic subjects. They have grown immensely as collaborators, but mostly about how to challenge themselves to be learners. Thank you.
We weren't photobombs. Item 5.0, announcement of action taken in closed session.
Non-Madam President.
Thank you. Item 6.0, agenda adoption. Make it a motion.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Okay, I've got a couple of seconds. All of you, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions? Fantastic. We have an adopted agenda. Item 7.0, special presentation, 7.1, participatory budgeting at the Met High School. Vice President Ryan?
Thank you, President Pritchett. I'm happy to say that I was first introduced to the idea of participatory budgeting when the city of Vallejo decided that that was a way to empower ordinary people to demystify the budget process and help decide how monies were being spent in their city. Imagine how powerful that concept could be when applied to youth and empowering youth to choose how to allocate key dollars that help support their daily school activities. Tonight, I have the opportunity of introducing a project that does just that at the Met High School. The Sacramento Community Priority Coalition, in partnership with the Black Parallel School Board, the Center for Multicultural Cooperation, and the Participatory Budgeting Project, came together with Met High School to introduce a new form of engagement, a student-led effort so that the school and the community better understood the budget process and was able to move participatory budgeting done well together at a local level. The project was held in the fall of 2015 and was extremely successful, and tonight, we have the opportunity to hear firsthand from some students who participated and from two wonderful adult mentors who helped get this project off the ground. Carl Pinkston from the Black Parallel School Board, Maria Madril from the Center for Multicultural Cooperation, and we have some students from the Met who will also be speaking tonight.
Normally, when I come to speak, it's bad news, so that's when LaShandra comes to give the good news, so we switched today. I wanted to say thank you, it's an honor, it's a pleasure to be able to speak to you and present this project called the Participatory Budget Project. Just a little history, and then I might pivot to Maria and Eli, who will actually talk more in detail about the Participatory Project. Participatory Budget Project is really a concept that came out of Brazil in the 1990s as a way of workers and peasants and people to be able to participate in the budgeting process, both on their local and their national level. It came to the United States in 2000 with a group called the Participatory Budget Project. We became really excited about it, the Community Priority Coalition of Black Parallel School Board, because local-controlled funding formula provides us an opportunity to engage youth, parents, and community in a way that is much more than this simply asking for advice and consent, but more of actually seeing how their dollars are being used and voting on that particular process. So it's a really exciting project, and it was really a joy to be a part of it, so.
So, good evening. So, my name is Maria Madril, and I'm the Executive Director of the Center for Multicultural Cooperation, and we had the opportunity to capture the project as it occurred at the Met High School. I'm also a board, probably four-year board member at the Met, and my daughter went to school and graduated from the Met. So I, you know, I've been around the school quite a bit and believe that this was the perfect setup in order for us to pilot the program with the assistance of the school personnel and the students. So you can go ahead and cue the video.
Yeah, now you press play.
Participatory budgeting is benefiting our students because it gives them a voice. It gives our students a direct line to how funding can benefit them in what they see as important, as opposed to what administration, district folks, and teachers think is important.
Helps them understand the difference between direct democracy and representative democracy. It also helps them participate and understand how it is that direct democracy works a little better by doing a hands-on project. The students were given a certain amount of money which they can play with. They had decisions to make with that amount of money, and those things happen in the real world.
While I was a part of the participatory budgeting process, I learned how important it is for everyone to participate. I think I also learned a little bit of respect for other people's opinions and other people's ideas.
I learned that it's a lot harder than I thought it would be. It's a much longer process of, as far as how much goes into it, just from the first part of like going around the different classrooms and figuring it out, and then there's creating proposals and creating the presentation to show up to other people and then gain the votes, and it was a much longer, much more elaborate process than I had imagined it would be.
So one of the things that we ran into, we're trying to include the parents that they want, but to engage the parents, it's a little harder because you have parents who work various odd hours, and so what we did is we created a night, a forum where all the parents were invited, and we split it up into two different parts to allow parents to come in and vote.
As an administrator and a leader, or whether you're talking in a school, or an organization, or government, I think we make assumptions about what students and families and staff want that are sometimes incorrect, and so we should promote that so that we actually see the voice by having people vote.
I think it was something that students really needed. They needed to know that they could make a change themselves, and I think it also gives them a good look into actual like voting with upcoming elections. I know that this generation is, has the lowest voting rate out of all other generations, so I think it's really cool to just get them started and show them that voting actually makes a difference, like we actually accomplished something with this, so now we can make a change, a bigger change, in a bigger community, in larger scale.
Thank you. So if you have any questions, we have a couple folks that are available.
Experience.
The experience overall, I think benefited not only me, but the entire school itself. Like I had said in the video, it's really important for us as youth to see that our voices actually make a difference today, whether it's in a small community or a larger community.
What was the project I was graded on?
What was that? What was the top vote?
Oh, the top vote, I think was actually, yeah, it was the Met Pick Me Up Room sound system, but we've actually managed to get all of the project ideas covered, so. Yeah. That includes the garden, handicap accessibility for the front door of the Met, and possibly, is it just the front door, or? Yeah, just the front door, and then also, we're getting school counselors to come and volunteer. Any other questions?
So, good evening, my name is Elia Sada. I happen to be the cool teacher who had the privilege to work with the students and incorporate participatory budgeting at our school. During the process, you know, at first, it was something new, so students weren't really aware of how it was going to work, and so they were a little nervous, but as it kind of came to be and students got to voice their concerns, you know, the needs of the school, I think it was really powerful because they don't hardly ever get to do that. A lot of times, it's us as administrators, teachers, doing a lot of these decisions. Same with, you know, and that was just with money, right? So how powerful it would be if they also get to say things about their education, right? That's how things would be implemented, and a lot of times, I notice in, you know, when you go to a doctor's office, the doctor always asks you, hey, what's wrong with you? What do you need? And so sometimes, we don't do that a lot in education, and for us to do that and say, hey, what do you guys need? What do you guys need as students at our school? And for them to voice their opinions and for us to actually implement it, I think they felt a sense of power. So, thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to do that.
I just want, I know, I just want to conclude and then open it up for questions, and I know we ran out of time, but it was a very interesting and powerful process for them. Number one, they had a lot of ideas. I don't know how many ideas you guys had, I don't know, 30, 40 ideas? And they were able to narrow it down to something manageable to vote on for four to six. That was one. The second was, it gave them an opportunity to really dig into the budget as to which one, in terms of funding for Title I, capital, you know, improvements, LCFF. It really, they really dig deep into determining which projects can be funded from which source, even though they had a pot of money to work from. And then last but not least, it was their ideas that came forward that it was, they were able to vote on and realizing that when we initially thought about, I think, I forgot how much money we initially came up with, $2,000, we thought it was too small, but to them, it was a lot of money, and it was an opportunity to actually utilize that money to actually do something really good for their school. And I think there was one project that didn't get funded, it was transgender...
Gender-neutral restroom.
Gender-neutral restroom, so, and you guys still working on it?
Yeah, actually, it's already been implemented into the school. There are lots of different issues when it came to who was going to look over the restroom and make sure no kind of funky business was going on, but with the principal, the principal himself, Vince, has his own personal restroom, and he doesn't use it, and was like, okay, you guys can go ahead and use this, and that way, they have someone, a staff member, onsite at all times to watch over, make sure that students are being safe. So all of the projects are, if not have not been implemented, are going to be implemented sometime in the near future.
Fantastic. Do we have public comments? Marado? Yeah, I know, but we need a little public comment first.
None undecided.
Okay. All right. Member Wu.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the Met for inviting me. Carl, thank you for inviting me. I had the opportunity, I spent the, part of the afternoon there, and I was talking to each of the teams, and I was really impressed. I asked some probing questions about the, not only the project, but about the funding and how it was going to benefit and who it was going to benefit, and the, what really impressed me was that the students themselves were not intimidated by my questions, and they were readily and were enthusiastic about the projects that they were proposing. And so I really found it difficult to, I think I was allowed to pick two, right? And that was really, really tough, so I had to keep wandering around the room, wandering around the room, but at the end of the day, I'm glad to see that all of them are funded, and the kid, I mean, the students did a really, really good job, so please pass along my congratulations because, you know, it was quite a moving experience for me. Thank you.
Member Royal.
Thank you, President Pritchett. Just briefly, I would like to thank Carl, because last year, he invited me, this is about a year, actually, a little over a year, to a conference in Oakland, and it was one of the most enlightening experiences because I had the opportunity, it was a participating budgeting process conference, and it was, it's like a worldwide, basically, people from all over the world and all over the country came to share their experiences, so I had the opportunity not only to see, but learn the basic concepts of the model, and then engage and hear from people all over the country and all over the world how they are engaging their communities and how they're implementing it, from very basic projects in their community, implementing all the way to civic leadership in terms of city councils or local governments, really using the participatory budgeting process to really allocate funding. And it's a very powerful idea. Obviously, as you can see from the video, it not only teaches a lesson of civic engagement and how voting happens and the, you know, the plethora of ideas and the distillation and the cooperation that needs to happen, and I think that our students are going to be much better citizens, and hopefully, the next step, active participants in our, in our process. And so, once I walked away from that conference, the biggest then question comes, what are the next steps? And the reason I wanted to speak tonight on this item is because the challenge then comes on discerning what the big question is. How do we use district dollars? And we cannot have a parallel track system to divert from the general fund necessarily to keep on funding projects, but to me, the biggest challenge, and then where I would like to see this project then germinate from the Met through the rest of the district is, how do we incorporate the mental process of participatory budgeting process in our internal process within the district and our budgeting process? So it's not about diverting and competing and splitting the budget as much as how many entry points can we give to our community to be part of the budgeting process and the decision-making process of our district, because in the end, this district does not belong to us up here. It belongs to the community, belongs to the students, belongs to the parents. And to me, what this project does is gives me hope to start engaging, not only in the LCFF, but then how do we learn from this model to start creating a transformative model where it's not about competing for dollars as much as creating a process that it's much more inclusive of the different ideas and needs that exist in the district. So congratulations, and thank you for all your hard work in making this happen.
Student Member Barry.
I think Member Arroyo said that really well, most of what I was going to say, but as a student who sits on this board and tries to represent student voice as much as I can, I think it's really amazing. I didn't even know this was a thing or was possible, and it just makes me so excited, and I wish every school had something like it, and I think, well, I think one of you said earlier is how normally when like, there's like a problem in the school, we don't ask the students what they need to help fix the problem, we just kind of decide for ourselves, and I think it's just so important, and I think this idea is so amazing. I think it's so awesome that your school got everything you wanted, and I really hope something like this comes to our school and that we do find a way to make a process like this and make sure that a lot more student voice is heard in our own budget.
Fantastic. Great work. We appreciate you coming out tonight. Item seven, oh, item 7.2, presentation of voter registration project at the Met High School. Vice President Hanson and student member Zelia Gonzalez.
Well, we decided to make, tonight is a Met night, so it's great to be able to do both of these at the same time. And I met Zelia last year when I asked the principal, Vince Wolf, who's at the Met, who would be joining us, but he's, he plays music very specially, once a year on St. Patrick's Day. He plays in a special St. Patrick's Day band. He was very sad he had to miss, but I know he sends his best wishes to the whole Met family that's here. And I asked, I asked Vince, who would, might be interested in helping me create a student-led voter registration program? And without hesitating, he had one person in mind immediately. He goes, Zelia Gonzalez. So let me ask her if she's interested. I said, great, I'd love to meet her, and so I did, and absolutely saw the great potential to do a program like I was envisioning. And we partnered with Secretary of State Alex Padilla. He came and joined us. He sent one of his staff members, joined us for the, for the creation of the project. Our secretary, the Sac County Registrar, Jill Levine, was part of this, and really, after I made the introductions, I just stood back. And with that, I'd just like to introduce the architect of the Met Voter Registration Program, Zelia Gonzalez.
Thank you.
And you're joined today by another guest, so I'd like to introduce her.
Hi, my name is Zelia Gonzalez. I'm obviously from the Met Sacramento High School, and this is...
My name is Carmen Martinez. I'm a senior at McClatchy High School.
So you came to me last school year in the fall, or somewhere in the fall, and that's when we put together a voter registration drive for the spring of 2015. So we've done two now at the Met. This was our first one. We registered over 50 students, and prefacing the voter registration drive, we did a, like a voter registration how-to, what it meant, and how, if, what, how you could register to vote, and who is eligible to register to vote. So we did like a 15-minute presentation in econ and US history classes, because that's where we figured we would find the most 16, 17, and eight-year-olds in those junior and senior classes. And then, at the end of that presentation, we had cooperation from our, those teachers to put in an assignment. It was a political parties discovery worksheet, so we had a bunch of, we presented shortly on the political parties, and then at the end, I created a worksheet beforehand, handed them out, and I said, pick a political party that you don't know anything about, and then there was questions on there to find out, you know, what they believed in, how they differ with your own views, or how they are the same, and actually, you had to do that for two different political parties, so there was two, and it was a really easy, one simple worksheet that made a, made a huge difference, as you'll see in a minute. We did post and pre-surveys. The post-survey didn't do as well as getting people to respond to it, because we sent out our surveys online, because our students, our students check their emails fairly often. We're a very technology-centered school, but a lot of people just didn't really care that much. that much about our surveys. So, we didn't have as much data at the end, but we, it still showed a significant number of people who changed their opinions on things. So, beforehand, I asked them a couple of different questions, but this is just one to show you how those, that information shifted after just a 15-minute presentation in their classrooms. In the beginning, I said, how old do you have to be to register to vote in the state of California? And 81% of people said that you had to be 18, which was not true because you can, you have to be 16 in the state of California to preregister to vote, which is registering to vote. So, it kind of shows that the laws in California aren't getting to the students that they're affecting. And then, after our presentations and after we had highly publicized that you only have to be 16 and we've registered all those students, 72% of respondents said that you only had to be 16. Some people did say 18, but, you know, you always have kind of floaters on, in data. So, yeah, that was pretty great. And then, we decided to do it again. Early in September, I had already planned on doing a second voter registration drive and expanding it with longer class time instruction as my senior thesis project. But in early September, I got a letter or an email really from Secretary of State's office that was announcing that two weeks in early September were going to be voter registration weeks for high schools. They were going to be like state-recognized and that was the time for people to do voter registration drives. So, I had to speed up my SDP, maybe like six months. And I put together a mock election and voter registration drive with two-day class instruction. We registered over 70 students that time. This is just over a lunch period, by the way, on one day in our, in our quad. And we, I did a two-day lesson. The first day was, what happens after you register to vote? What is the process from registering to vote to actually voting? How you will get your ballot in the mail if you mark that on your registration? How to know where your polling place is, things like that? And then, I gave them an assignment about a mock election, which was new for our county to do. So, I gave them an assignment that was write a one-page paper on one of the topics that is going to be on the mock election about, you know, what the pros say about this, what the cons are about this, how you feel about this. So, there was a longer assignment. And then, the second day, I came back in and I asked everyone to share from their essays. And so, everyone in the whole classroom got to hear from everyone else's opinions and about the pros and cons about all of these issues in the classroom. So, that was very engaging. And yeah, and that ended up registering 70 students. And you can see, they would register to vote and then they would participate in the mock election right behind it. So, that was really fun. A lot of people really loved feeling like what it feels like to vote because there was a lot of anxiety around what's going to happen? How do I know where to go to my polling place? What's going to happen when I get there? What if I get turned away? I was like, you can't get turned away. Don't worry, you'll be fine. So, a lot of those things were dispelled with just very short presentations in classrooms. And then, we expanded this year also to include McClatchy High School.
So, I also started the voter registration drive as well as the mock election for my senior project as well. So, actually, the past two days, Tuesday and Wednesday, I held a voter registration drive in one of our main quads at McClatchy. So, we ended up having about 91 students register, which was really great. And I think that a lot of students didn't, they were not aware that they were allowed to preregister at 16. So, once they were aware of that, we got a lot more people to come. Also, at the registration drive, I passed out some of the California Endowment shirts for the Get Out the Vote campaign, more specifically for the Latino vote. So, I think that that drew in a lot more diversity and a lot more of the Latino students, which was something that I was really interested in. So, I think that a lot of students really enjoyed that and they also like free things. So, that was very successful. And back in November, I did a mock election at our school as well. And that included, it was a mandatory thing for all senior government classes to attend. So, each period throughout the day, the classes would come to our auditorium and there would, there was a presentation about what elections are like and how to vote and like Zilia said before, where your nearest polling stations are and everything, and really the importance of voting and exercising your right to vote. So, that was really informative. I got a lot of really great feedback on it. A lot of the students and teachers said that it was very informative and fun as well. So, they said that would be something that they would be interested in continuing for future years. So, that was really great.
Yeah, this mock election was definitely the epitome of hands-on learning and we got a lot of very positive feedback. So, some of our successes, we registered collectively over 200 students, over 210. And there was a lot of really great teacher cooperation. And when we intertwined it with curriculum and government classes like hers and in mine, when I got to come in and actually include it as, you know, an assignment, as in a lesson, it made the world's difference in getting people excited about it and, and not just excited about it, like, you know, it seems kind of weary at first once you have to do it, but once they got into it, a lot of people were excited about, you know, exercising their voice like was shown in the participatory budgeting. And so, that was very exciting. And then, we also got the high school voter registration weeks from September 14th to the 25th. I like to say that we played a part in that and the state's chosen to do that. And then, we were recognized by the county in our participation in that as well. So, I would say that that was a success. Some of the obstacles that we encountered, the mock election ballot didn't have real questions on it. So, we felt that that kind of dumbed it down for students and we felt like that was kind of, it didn't make students feel like they were actually having a voice because their questions were like, you know, what time should the curfew be changed to? Or like, you know, there were just very trivial questions that didn't make a huge impact. So, some of them were like, you know, the president campaigns and that was nice, but if we would have had real questions that were coming up on maybe the June election ballot, that would have made a large difference as well. Sometimes, working with teachers and administration was kind of a challenge. Like, for example, Carmen, do you want to talk?
So, yeah, it's sometimes at our school, it's really hard to communicate with the administration just because they're hard to locate or they're doing, they're busy doing their own thing. So, communicating, communication is kind of like a big issue in our school because it's so large. I put in an announcement in our school, we have daily announcements, so I put in an announcement for that week that we were doing the voter registration drive and they only announced it for one day, which was kind of frustrating. But I took over that and I went class to class to make sure that students were aware of it and that not only the senior class was aware, but also sophomore and junior classes where students of 16-years-old and older were aware. And I let them know what they were capable of and I think that was really helpful.
Yeah. Getting, communication with students was kind of a big part of it and that's our other obstacle we ran into. Letting students know that you only had to be 16 was kind of a problem, especially in such a large school like McClatchy. And we think that some of the administration cooperation in the future would dispel some of that. Next steps, we would like to change online voter registration to be 16-year-olds. Right now, you still have to be 18 to register online and our generation is very tech-oriented. So, we think our tech-optioned online register should be 16. Changing registration forms to accommodate 16-year-old applicants because there, the language on there is not very clear and kind of can dissuade some people. And then, create an easy timeline and project package because it's actually a very easy package to do for other schools to adapt and then using that to expand to new schools. Thank you for your time.
Do we have any public comment? Vice President Ryan.
So, I want to first just commend Carmen and Zilia for such an incredibly sophisticated effort. You know, I appreciate that not did you, not just did you go into the schools with this idea of voter registration, but doing post and pre-surveys to understand, you know, what the level of knowledge around voting was for students. And then, frankly, the fact that you walk away with areas for improvement and lessons learned. Because when I see such a phenomenal initiative, I wonder, how do we scale that at all high schools? And so, one question that I have for Zilia and Carmen as well is, are you looking to mentor and provide guidance to students who could be the lead at other high schools adopting similar efforts?
So, I would say yes. The problem is, is that, you know, we have a very short window. We're only here for four years and these projects usually take place, our junior and senior years. I think that the thing that I put on the slide about creating some sort of package or thing like that would be much more successful in like, kind of, you know, mentoring students or other faculty members because not all the times do students have the time that the Met has to do these sorts of things besides senior thesis project. So, not personally, but hopefully, there will be, you know, items and things that will guide people in the future because, you know, we're going off to college, so it's a little bit tough.
So, let me ask you, where are you both going to college?
For now.
Amazing.
I haven't decided yet, but I've been accepted to SAC State and Cal Poly Pomona. So, I'm kind of waiting to hear back from a few more, a few UCs, so we'll see.
Congratulations. So, I will just finally say in full disclosure, I first met Zilia a couple of years ago. She is a tremendous community activist in Oak Park. You're brilliant, you're a feminist and I, you know, expect that one day you might be our next Secretary of State. So, thank you so much for your efforts.
Thank you very much for your time.
Vice President Hanson.
I just wanted to wrap up and say thank you for coming here and sharing that with us. And Carmen, it's nice to meet you too and thank you for doing it at McClatchy. And I know my board members would be excited to learn about this and to learn that the law has changed allowing 16-year-olds to vote. So, it's very exciting.
Registered to vote, not to vote.
Yes, correct. I'm sorry, to register to vote. Thank you for the correction, yes. Ever the teacher. So, thanks for being a good inspiration for us and hopefully, we can, you know, you can mentor some people too on the way onto your next steps and then we can help make sure that it keeps going. So, thank you again and thanks for joining us.
Yes, thank you for your time, yeah.
Member Royal.
Thank you. Thank you, President Pritchett. Really quick, yes, you made hopefully, a booklet, something that guides, but the power of YouTube or videos will ensure and allow your message to continue. So, don't worry that it has to be so systematic in place, but if you leave record, because sometimes if I read a notebook, it may not transfer all the information, but if you leave a video, that may allow other students to just perpetually see it. So, just an idea.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. You both are very brilliant, obviously. And, you know, just in kind of weighing off of what my colleagues have said, one thing I was thinking of is maybe sharing that video and Student Member Barry can work with the Student Advisory Council because maybe this is something that they can take on later and help us sustain and continue with your efforts. So, thank you so much.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your time again.
Student Member Barry, do you have a speech for us?
This meeting of the Sacramento City School Board is being recorded in its entirety and will be cable cast without interruption, with exception of technical problems on Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, Comcast, Consolidated Communications, and AT&amp;T U-verse. Today's meeting will air on Sunday, March 20th at 9:00 a.m., Monday, March 21st at noon, and webcast at www.sacmetrokable.tv. Members of the audience wishing to address the board should fill out a speaker identification form located in the back of the community room and give to the Chief Communication, Communications Officer, Mr. Ross. Prior to the conclusion of the item's presentation, please speak into the microphone when addressing the board and state your name for the record. Please limit comments during public comment to items not listed on the agenda. If you are found to be commenting on an item that is on the agenda, you will be asked to defer until your item comes up on the agenda. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on silent or vibrate.
Item 8.0, public comment.
President Pritchett, we have 14 comments on 8.0. I'll read the first five names. If folks can please line up behind a microphone in the order you're called. Carolyn Nutter, Brandon Motley, Travis Rodewick, Caleb White, and Armando Gomez.
Before you start, I just wanted to say, it looks like we have a lot of people here from the same group. So, if, I just wanted to reiterate that there's 15, or yeah, 15 minutes on our agenda for public comment. You each get two minutes, but if, so if you feel like you're going to say the same thing, you just say ditto or same as her, same as him.
Okay. We, I did notify all of them that they had a two-minute time limit and only 15 minutes for the topic. So, hopefully, we will keep it concise.
Thank you.
Should we wait for the remaining members of the board?
Uh, nope, we have a quorum. You can go ahead.
Okay. All right. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Carolyn Nutter and I am the Training Director for ITAP. We are an electrical, commercial electrician program that has been associated with the Charles A. Jones Adult School. As you are well aware, and you have received many emails from me in the last week, the students in the program are being deprived of their opportunity for education. There is an easy solution to this problem and CAJ is choosing to walk away from its obligations to the students and the families standing behind me. They've all come today to fight for their rights as students. Some of those involve, include graduates of our program who are now currently employed by major contractors in town. One of those contractors, in fact, is responsible for this building and the electricity in this building. But we aren't here to talk about the graduates. We are here to talk about the students who are currently enrolled at Charles A. Jones, who relied upon the representation of funding from the administrators at CAJ, who would not have been allowed to sit in class if they did not complete their CAJ registration process. And as you can imagine, the students and their families are heavily impacted by CAJ's decision now. They are here today to fight for their rights. These students represent members of our community. They are veterans, they are graduates from Sacramento City High Schools, they are spouses, they are mothers, and they are fathers. And they are all here on a path trying to better their lives so that they can work on projects like the Cerner Center, like Shriners Hospital, or like the Golden One Arena, just to name a few. The only thing that is standing in the way are those at CAJ who are refusing the simple solution of hiring the credentialed instructors who have taught this program for years. In refusing to do so, they are denying their students the right, an opportunity to education, which will empower them to become gainfully employed, productive members of the community. They are here today to speak to you so you understand the impact that this is having not only on them, but their families and the continued impact it will have on them. Thank you for your time.
Hi, my name is Brandon Motley and thank you for letting me speak in front of you. I started ITAP on January 18th and prior to going to ITAP, I was instructed to go to CAJ where I had to fill out a registration form, I had to do financial aid, take tests, a number, a number of things I had to do. And they made me sign a contract saying that they were going to fund me my financial aid to go to school because I do not have $16,000 to pay for school. Yes, after I get out of school and have a job, yes, I can pay that, that is not a problem. But it's really upsetting to have somebody make you sign something, saying something, and then just not even contact me and say, oh, we're going back on what we said. But my teacher, Karen Nutter, walked in and told us all exactly what was happening and we're still in school. That's what's frustrating. I don't understand. Can you please help me understand? Because I, I mean, from my understanding, when I sign a contract from somebody who's actually given the contract and made it, that they have to abide by that. I didn't break any of my agreement. I'm going, I'm still in school. I'm really upset and frustrated. I don't understand. I just want to graduate.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank the board members for your consideration this evening. My name is Travis Rodewick. I'm a product of the Sacramento area school system. I'm saddened and I'm disappointed, to say the least, about the situation that Carolyn talked about. I've desired to be an electrician for quite some time now and I, we all kind of agreed, had financial aid agreements with Charles A. Jones that enabled us to enroll at ITAP. Like Brandon said, it's about $16,000. This was pretty uncomfortable for me personally. I worked through five years at SAC State in their criminal justice program without taking out a student loan. Now, two months into this program, I'm finding out that, that Charles A. Jones has kind of pulled the plug on our financial aid. Based on the information that I received from, from Charles A. Jones, I quit my job doing contract work for PG&E and Roseville Electric, a job that's not waiting for me when I go back. Furthermore, I detrimentally relied upon the agreement with Charles A. Jones to incur the $16,000 worth of debt to attend school, a decision putting my family, my house, and my education in jeopardy. I came tonight asking for the board's help to rectify. in jeopardy. I came tonight asking for the board's help to rectify the situation in which Charles A. Jones has wronged students, students who are trying to better their lives. Once again, thanks for your consideration.
Hello, my name's Armando Gomez. Thank you for listening to us today. I'm here regarding the funding issues occurring to the ITAP students. In December, I found myself unemployed. Later on, I found a new way to make a living for my family, which was ITAP. So I went down to Charles A. Jones and was directed to take all the tests and register as their students and sent to ITAP. We hear time and time again that having an education is the only way to prosper, and a lot of us here have put ourselves in a, in a stop of creating an income in order to get that education. And now I find myself unsure of what the future holds, as I did in December. When I signed up for the school in December, I, like I said, I was unemployed with a family of four. At the time, my son was three months old. I'm sure you could hear him in the background. He's the loudest one here. And my, my student ID card says I'm a Sacramento City Unified School District student, but I don't feel that way. We did not get any notification from them that we weren't going to be getting funding anymore. We had to hear this from our teachers at ITAP. For them to not even call us and let us know what's going on and just go back on the agreement after we're holding all of our end on the bargain, everybody's doing good in class, everybody's passing all their tests, and they're not holding up their end of the bargain. They allowed us to start the classes in January, and they're starting to pull this from us. I'm hoping the stories you hear tonight show that many families are being, put their trust into the school system, and they hope they would better their lives by pulling our financial aid from under our feet. Our futures will be unknown. Please don't let the reputation of Charles A. Jones, as well Sacramento City Unified School District, be tied to an awful thing.
As our, as our next speaker approaches, if our next five speakers can please line up in order, Oscar Rivera, Shane Scheddenhelm, I believe, Solomon Wright, Sheri Dalton, and Nikki Malevsky.
Good evening, board. My name is Caleb White. I have been a Charles A. student since October 2015. I'm currently enrolled in an electrician program that was offered to me by the CAJ campus during orientation. I have moved all the way down here from Humboldt County with the hopes of fulfilling my dreams of becoming an electrician and to be able to give my children a much better life than what I had growing up. I came to the CAJ school. I signed a legal contract with them and attended school, with the attendance school at least 90% of the time, as well as maintaining a certain level of schoolwork completed. To date, I have a perfect attendance and have been a model student that the CAJ school would really be proud of. I have full, I had full faith in the school that as long as I fulfill my obligation as a student, then they would keep their financial agreement with me. At the time, I had no reason to doubt the school's ethics and higher standard education standards. Recently, my world came crashing down on me when I was informed that CAJ school was suddenly no longer going to honor their contract. They did not disperse my second payment due February 19th. I got no letters stating why, no emails, no phone calls, no nothing. I got no letters stating why. So I called numerous times, no answers. I do not understand what I could have possibly done for the school to withdraw the contract with me, because the only ones who's going to suffer is me and my kids. I am just one month away from graduating and giving my kids a better life. But without my financial assistance, it looks like Charles A. Jones made, made a decision to rip my dreams right out from under me. So all I'm left here with is just questions, you know, like, why? What did I do to deserve this? What do my kids deserve this, you know? I went through great lengths to make sure that I honored my end of the obligation, my ending of contract. I made sure I honored that. All I ask is that they do the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board and the audience. My name is Oscar Rivera. I am a husband and father of three beautiful children, two of whom are with, with me here tonight. I've been in construction for the last 10 years or so, and it's been tough. In, in August, I spoke with my wife, and I realized that I had to make a decision to, to better my family's life and, and take a new path and pick a different career. So in October, I, I had seen ITAP on TV, so I called them, and they referred me to CAJ. So I went down there, and I attended their orientation. I took all their tests. I filled out all the financial aid stuff, and I became a Charles A. Jones student and Sacramento Unified City student. And I was pretty happy about that. My understanding was I would remain a Sacramento City student until I finished my education. I love the school I attend. My classmates are awesome. The staff is great. My professor is truly amazing. My family and myself continue to make daily sacrifices so I can finish school and better all our lives. I feel Charles A. Jones and Sac City Unified should stand by my side as their student. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. Thank you for taking the time to address us. I'm a Sacramento City Unified School District graduate. I have 74-plus units in college through the Los Rio system. I stopped going to there because I needed a way to support myself and my fiance, who is here tonight. Charles A. Jones guaranteed me a place at a remote learning location that they were affiliated with that would help me further my goal, out on the path to be an electrical engineer. So I thought, hey, I'm going to go be an electrician, get some experience in the field, and then I'm going to continue my schooling at night, so I'll be able to better support my family. In my wallet here, which says, "Keep this card in your wallet. Sacramento City Unified School District," has my name and ID number. This leads me to believe that I'm actually a student. Really, I don't feel like that right now. Like everyone else said, we've all kept up our end of the bargain, and I feel like CAJ has let us all down. To loosely quote, loosely quote Ms. Barry, you, you said that the students should have a voice, and we should listen to the students to go to help solve the problems. And we have quite a few here tonight with an opinion that I believe needs consideration. I thank you very much for your time. Have a great evening.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Solomon Wright. I'm an alumni from ITAP. This is Louis. This is my fiance, Catherine. I know you hear the passion from everyone's voices, the frustration that they're, I went through the program. It's dedication to be there all day and not be able to have another job. I recycled bottles and cans so I could put gas in the car, just so I could get to school. That's what kind of dedication it takes. I look at these guys as the next generation of electricians. So when things go out at your house, these are the guys you're going to have to call. And you don't want them uneducated, doing things, I've seen some stuff. You don't want that. So what you want are people who are educated, who've taken the time and learned from the best. And that's what you're going to get from ITAP. That's all I'm going to say. Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Sherilyn Dalton. I have an issue of I don't feel welcome at my home school where my son goes. I was recently in a 504 meeting, and I let the principal and his teacher know, he doesn't trust you. He doesn't feel he can come to you about anything because of the incident that one of the students did to my son, and they weren't reprimanded, or Caleb wasn't apologized to, or anything. I was just recently, I thought, you know, schools are open policy. If I feel that my son is having a problem, and I'm not getting, you know, through to the principal or his teacher, why can't I observe? When did we come to make an appointment to go into your kid's school? I went in there on the 4, on 2/14/16. They don't acknowledge me. They don't give me eye contact, and I walked right through. Now, that's a concern to me. When I can do that, who else can do that? And then you want to come to me 15 minutes later, after I'm already in the classroom, and tell me I need to make an appointment. But she did it on such a display. Why do, why do the kids and the parents got to be on display? Do you guys have a HIPAA law? We should be able to talk to our principal and parent in private, not in front of kids. I asked her to come out of the classroom, and she went out the door, and she explained to me she needed an appointment. So I want to know, I need copies of, I thought it was an open door policy. I need to be better educated, and I would like that from you guys, because I'm being called loud, obnoxious. She's threatening me. I'm afraid of her. I have never given her any of that indication. But I need some help, and I need some help now, because they are now violating my son. They sent the police to my house yesterday. For what? Because it's a display. And they put him on display by sending out all the little yellow notes. He was bullied after school.
Can you tell us which school?
Ma'am, before you step away.
Pony Express. And I have never had, I have seven children, and this is the only child I've ever had to deal with this.
Ma'am, make sure that we have your, your information, contact.
Okay. Yeah.
Okay, I also want to take this opportunity to address all the folks that came here and outlining their concerns with Charles A. Jones and the program. This is the first that I'm aware of, that there are some issues in terms of, it sounds like scholarships, funding, something that helps you guys continue to go through the program. I think it's also probably the board's first, you know, notice of that as well. So I just want to assure you that we'll look into this. In fact, we're going to already make an appointment to talk to the administrator and really dig deep and figure out what happened and what are the, what are the issues, so we can try to find some solutions. But I also want to let you know how I appreciate you guys coming up here. I know it takes a lot of courage to come up and speak in public, but, you know, your persistence, your perseverance, staying with it, you know, trying to make this opportunity work for you and your families is, I have to tell you, it's very, very touching. And I applaud you all for sticking with the program, and we'll try to figure out what, what happened and try to find some solutions and resolutions for you as well. So you'll be hearing from us at some point soon.
Ms. Malevsky?
Our final five comments on this item, a public comment, first Ms. Malevsky, followed by, followed by Lyric Wilson, Q. Harris, Nicole Pierce, and Ian Arnold.
Good evening, President Pritchett, Superintendent Banda, members of the board. Today, when I was dropping off my kids at school, there was a report on KQED radio about the staffing crisis in Oakland Unified School District. I was blown away to hear the reporter recognize this crisis in Oakland after learning they had 14 current unfilled vacancies. The report went on with the testimony of how difficult it is in those classrooms and how the opportunities these students are missing. If 14 open positions in Oakland is a crisis, what do you call the situation in Sac City where the number of unfilled vacancies is three times as high? We have hundreds of students in classrooms right now with non-credentialed substitutes basically for the rest of the year. In preparing for conducting surplus, the surplus process early this year, we just got information from the district that there are 138 open classroom teaching positions for next year. This doesn't include special ed, or school psychologists, or speech and language, or resource teachers, and these are just the ones known right now. So these are the positions from class size reduction and retirements. This does not reflect the number of positions that will become vacant when teachers move to other districts because of wages. Unfortunately, the district has buried its head in the sand when it comes to taking the immediate steps to address this crisis, and continues to take steps that erode the confidence in the district's leadership, particularly when the district is in the best financial position it's been in its history. This year's budget, for example, continues to include $12 million that has not been allocated. Unfortunately, the leadership's refusal to spend those dollars on today's students to ensure that all Sac City children are taught by credentialed educators is only part of the problem. Despite a commitment to move away from the top-down leadership style of our previous superintendent, vestiges of that discredited leadership paradigm continue and manifest itself in ways that, that are included in the placement of principals. We are concerned that contrary to promises to hear all stakeholders and the desire to ensure that the best candidate is selected for the position, the process recently proposed for hiring permanent principals in those schools that currently have interims is highly flawed. That is, stakeholders have to raise allowed enough objections regarding the performance of the interim principal to convince the sole decision-maker in the process, the superintendent, not to make that principal permanent. Rather than using our longstanding interview process, which ensures that interim principals is the best, I'm sorry, ensures that the interim principal is the best qualified and best suited in an open and transparent hiring process that allows for the fullest vetting of a wide range of candidates to meet the needs of a particular school. A local community is deprived of the opportunity to have a real voice in determining that the principal hired is the best choice. Also note this process deprives interim principal of the legitimacy that a transparent and open process brings. To be clear, we suspect that in open and transparent competition among candidates, a majority of today's interim principals would be the ones selected, because we know there are a number of them are excellent in filling these positions. But as in many things, the process is important. When you look at the employment section of our website, the administrator selection process, you get this blank page, totally blank. And we had a process for administrator selection. It was an open and transparent process of posting candidates and having an interview panel of teachers and community members, classified staff, staff from the district office. And it may have taken some time, but it was well worth it to ensure that the best person among the candidates was selected and that they have been chosen by the community that they will lead. So please take the steps to ensure that we have a quality credentialed teachers and quality, well-respected principals our students deserve. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Pritchett, members of the board, and Superintendent Banda. Thank you so much for having me speak tonight. My name is Lyric Wilson, and I am a senior at Sac High, where I have played on the varsity basketball team for the past two years. I transferred to Sac High from Brookside Christian my junior year when I moved from Stockton to Sacramento. Next year, I will be attending California State University San Marcos on a full-ride athletic scholarship for basketball. With me tonight is my teammate, Q. Harris, who will also speak. We wanted to come tonight to invite you to come out this Saturday to the Northern California Championship Games, which will feature two teams from the Sac City School District. The West Campus Boys will play for the Division Four title at 4:00 p.m. Saturday at American Canyon High School, which is in Fairfield. I, along with my teammates at Sac High, will play for the Division Two title at 10:00 a.m. Saturday at Sleep Train Arena. As you can see, with one game at 10:00 and the other at 4:00 p.m., you can make both if you want. Also, I would like to thank board member Jessie Ryan for coming out with her family to see the Sac High boys win the section championships back on March 5. We really appreciated your support. You might remember last year, last year's McClatchy Girls Basketball Team winning a state title. That Northern California Championship will play the following week for the state, for the state title, games which will also be held at Sleep Train Arena. the state title, games which will also be held at Sleep Train Arena. How cool would it be if two schools from Sac City won state titles this year? Thank you and we hope to see you at the game.
Thank you.
Good evening, President Pritchett, member of the board and Superintendent Banda. Thank you so much for having me speak tonight. As stated earlier, my name is Q. Harris. I am a senior at Sac High where I have played on the varsity basketball team for the past two years. I transferred to Sac High from Sheldon High School my junior year as I was really struggling academically and I was worried that I wouldn't be, be eligible for college. Now, things have turned around, both on and off the court, but before I go to college, I hope to bring a state title to Sac High and Sacramento. In fact, things have turned around so much that I became NCAA eligible and, and next year I will be attending Seattle University on a full ride athletic scholarship for basketball. While I really hope that you can come to Saturday's game for either West Campus or Sac High, or maybe you can come to both, I also wanted to ask the board for their support to another issue. Since we are in the Metro League, we play other Sac City schools like McClatchy, Johnson, and Kennedy. It's so cool to be able to play in the updated gyms for McClatchy and Johnson and our football team really enjoys playing on Kennedy's new field. However, I wanted to ask what project we can do at Sac High. Since we haven't received anything like the other schools, we could really use upgrades to our gym like other schools. For example, when we came back to school this past Saturday night at about eleven PM following our playoff, playoff win in the Bay Area, we found the water from the rain had leaked into our basketball team room and snack bar area. We had to put our, out eleven different buckets and trash cans to try and catch all the water, but it still wasn't enough. In fact, we are, we aren't even able to go into our team room until Monday since it is still drying out and it smells moldy. As you can imagine, trying to win a state championship is hard enough and we hope the board can help us so we have great resources like the other schools we're able to get. Thank you and we hope to see you on Saturday.
Thank you. Good luck on Saturday.
Yes.
Good evening, board members. I am here to represent these great students. My name's Nicole Pierce. I am the mother of a Sacramento High School graduate, now senior, a freshman, and a preschooler at Oak Park Pres- um, preschool. And I am, am a parent of a College Shack student. So I think I just covered Oak Park. I am here because, um, there's great things happening in the school district. In addition to our sports, my sons, um, play on two of them. And I've had the pleasure of watching their games and also viewing all the different equipment, gyms, facilities, and you can't help but to compare it to what we have. In addition to sports, um, I wanted to mention a few highlights that showcase how far our students are willing to go when we set high expectations for them. Like the young woman had mentioned, she was a high, a Sheldon High School student, didn't do well and had to move to Sacramento High School. I had this same incident, so much so that I moved all of my children to Sacramento High Oak Park saw a dramatic increase in the number and percentage of students scoring at or above grade level in math between two thousand and three and two thousand and thirteen. In two thousand and three, only sixteen percent attending Oak Parks, uh, schools in Oak Park were at grade level. But in two thousand and thirteen, that number had risen to fifty-five percent. What happened to produce these results? Two dis- two school districts got new amazing principals and six charter schools were opened to the neighborhood. May I continue?
One more second.
And sharing these highlights with the board, we're doing well academically, we're doing well in our sports. I wanted to share that it's my hope that you continue to support our school. Um, one action that you can help us with is the allocation of bond funds. For example, in two thousand and thirteen, each district was allocated a small amount of bond funding for quick strike projects. However, independent charter schools were not provided with these funds, yet dependent charter schools were. And I'll mention that of those nine independent charter schools, eight of them were within a school district. The names of these campuses were used in literature that was shared in the campaign to get the bond passed. And I know I'm not mentioning anything new because I've had the privilege of, of watching playback. So I know this inequity you're well aware of, but I want you to please consider Sacramento Charter High School and this whole allocation of bond funds because they're great, they deserve it, and we need it. So thank you so much. It's a privilege be, to be before you and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mr. Arnold?
Evening, President Pritchett, board members, Superintendent Banda. Um, I feel like I've been playing hooky, but I do have a doctor's note. Um, hopefully I'll be back a little bit more often now. Um, I want to start by apologizing to the superintendent. Normally I wouldn't come to you guys with something like this without first having the opportunity to discuss it with the superintendent. Um, an issue was brought to my attention last week where a group of employees had complained about their direct supervisor, um, divulging personal information, divulging confidential information, threatening employees, uh, asking other employees to help him fire people, uh, telling them which employees shouldn't have been hired because the test was rigged, lots of things like that. I went to the HR director responsible for that area and I believe she was acting absolutely appropriately. I want to be very clear, the HR director was ensuring that the manager of that area was going to investigate the situation, um, was going through the appropriate process. My concern was that nobody had made the decision to remove the supervisor from that work area while the investigation was underway. People are reporting that they're being physically ill because of the fear and the stress caused and that they're being intimidated during the investigation process and being asked to recant. I became very concerned today when I discovered the superintendent, or, I'm sorry, not the superintendent, I discovered the supervisor still continuing to report to work at that site. Um, I'm hoping that we can get this resolved, but I want to say it's not specific to this situation. This situation is sort of the short term. In the long term, it has been our experience that the more money folks get paid, the lower standard they're held to. If this was an SEIE-represented employee, the person would have been paid, placed on administrative leave or moved to another site until the investigation had been continued, had been completed. We're not asking for a witch hunt, we're just asking that, that my folks are as protected as anybody else would be in this sort of a situation. Um, and again, it's not any particular department, this is a very specific situation, but I could point to school sites where principals have made allegations against employees that have been disproven and then the principal and the area superintendent refused to allow that employee back on that campus, so we have to struggle to find another placement. I'm just saying, we've got policies about how you treat folks, we've got policies about how the investigations are carried out. Let's please ensure that it's not just the lowest-paid folks who are held to that high standard. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Item nine point oh, consent agenda, you got a motion to?
Removed.
Thank you, a second? Thank you. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Fantastic. Motion passes. Item ten point oh, board workshop strategic plan and other initiatives. Item ten point one, approved resolution number twenty-eight seventy-seven, renewal of charter for California Montessori Project, Capital Campus. Mr. Kramer?
Good evening, Board President Pritchett, esteemed board members, Superintendent Banda. On behalf of the charter review team, I will be presenting the findings and recommendation for the charter renewal of California Montessori Project Capital Campus. To my right, we have Executive Director Gary Bowman of California Montessori Project and the principal, Ms. Bernie Evangelista, outside legal counsel, Ed Scolar from Luthano Tonight's presentation will entail an overview of the charter school, an introduction to our district's charter review team, the minimum standard for charter renewal, the criteria to deny a charter renewal, and finally, staff's findings and recommendation. California Montessori Project has been under the purview of our district for ten years and they've been in operation for fifteen years overall. They opened in July two thousand and six. Current enrollment is three hundred and twenty-nine as AK-8 school. The school is located on district facilities and they are located at twenty-six thirty-five Chestnut Hill Drive. They are an independent charter. California Montessori Project submitted their renewal petition on January nineteenth, two thousand and sixteen. Thirty days later, a public hearing was held on February eighteenth. Their current charter is due to expire June thirtieth, two thousand and sixteen. The district's charter review team is comprised of fourteen of our finest. Each member of the charter review team, redu- um, each member of the charter review team, uh, specialized in their own respective elements. And thereafter, each charter review member submitted their individual findings as well as their recommendation. Also as a consensus, the charter review team, uh, came to an agreement regarding the ultimate The minimum standard for charter renewal per ed code is that the charter school shall meet one of the four low-listed criteria. The first three, they are the dated and no longer calculated API measures. The fourth one, the fourth criterion, is the performance comparison of the school that the student at California Montessori would have attended. Utilizing the CDE's advisory regarding AB four eighty-four, it is staff's recommendation or it is staff's finding that California Montessori Project meets all four of the The criteria to deny a charter renewal per ed code is that the governing board must make written factual findings of one, at least one of the below criteria. The criteria for denying a charter renewal, they are: the charter school presents an unsound educational program; the charter school is demonstrably unlikely to successfully implement the program; the renewal petition does not contain the necessary affirmations; the renewal petition does not contain reasonably comprehensive descriptions of the sixteen elements; and finally, the petition does not include evidence that the charter school met one of the four required academic performance criteria as listed in the previous slide. After thorough review of the renewal petition and the revised petition, district staff finds that California Montessori Project meets all five of the listed criteria. It is therefore our team's recommendation that the board adopts resolution twenty-eight seventy-seven to approve the renewal of the charter for California Montessori Project Capital Campus.
Do we have any public comment? Or?
No public comment.
All right. Do you have any board comment? No? Okay. Well, this is an action item, so I'd like to have a motion.
So moved.
I got a motion in a second and we, we, okay, we do have a forum, just was making sure, sorry. All right, I got a motion in a second, all approve say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Fantastic. Approved. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Adam ten point two, educator effectiveness plan. Mr. Appel? That's okay. I could have used those earlier, I was just saying.
Good evening, Board President Pritchett, Superintendent Banda, and members of the school board. I'm here to talk today about educator effectiveness funding, which was established for, among other things, beginning teacher and administrator support and development. As you know, bringing in, developing, and supporting new teachers and administrators is critical to the vitality of the district. To that end, we have begun and are continuing three important projects. Student-teacher collaboration with Sacramento State, new teacher and induction reform, and new administrator development and support. The first is restructuring of how we engage with student teachers. Currently, Sacramento State and other area teacher preparation programs place student teachers in district schools or directly with teachers they know and with whom they have pre-existing relationships. This results in some equity issues. Some schools consistently having student teachers and the subsequent advantages when they need to hire a new teacher and some who don't. Further, it results in inconsistent engagement with our student teachers, which is problematic in regards to their preparation and for our university partners. Starting this spring, we'll begin to train Sacramento City Unified School District teachers from each of our school sites on the co-teaching student-teacher model. The training will be done by Sacramento State School of Education professors. Student teachers, under this model, student teachers will be placed by the district and Sac State collaboratively and the co-teaching model for developing student teachers will be in place for the fall of two thousand and sixteen, two thousand and seventeen. This new structure will create the opportunity for Sacramento City Unified School District cooperating teachers to be trained in how to mentor and support student teachers and learn the co-teaching model for developing student teachers, which is increasingly being implemented around the state. But we will be the first district, uh, in the area to be implementing it district-wide, which, by the way, Sacramento State is very, very excited about and working with us on this. It will also result in more equitable distribution of student teachers. And critically and often overlooked in regard to the use of student teachers, better results for our students. There's research which shows that when student teachers are with a student teacher, they learn less. They learn more with their experienced teacher, which makes sense, but they learn even more when an experienced teacher is working with a student teacher in the co-teaching model. There's also research that there are better outcomes for student teachers as well. In the co-teaching, uh, structure, teachers are not confronted with a sink-or-swim situation where bad habits are sometimes formed. Instead, they're in a more supportive structure which nurtures learning. And finally, this will help create a more formal pipeline for recruiting teachers into the district. A second project is the reform of what was formerly known as BITSA in order to better support and serve new teachers in, uh, new teachers in the district. All new teachers are required by the Commission on Teacher Credentialing to do a two-year practicum following their student teaching academic year. In those two years, they are required to demonstrate proficiency in the California standards for the teaching profession. Districts that provide new teachers with the opportunity to fulfill that requirement, as we do, need to create an op- uh, an approved structure and curriculum to support teachers to meet these standards. This year, the Commission on Teacher Credentialing has announced new standards for what is now called induction, which has fostered the need to revise and reform Sacramento City Unified School District induction curriculum. Starting this spring, the structure and curriculum is being revised to meet these new standards. Currently, a new teacher's support provider is not necessarily and most often isn't from the teacher's site. For a variety of reasons, this is not optimal. This spring, we are working to identify and train support providers from each site. When there is a new teacher at the site, they will be assigned the support provider from that site. Support providers will be trained in the new induction process emphasizing district core instructional practices and reflective teaching. New teachers will attend two days of training before the start of the school year. New teachers will attend two days of training before the start of the school year. The training will consist of an orientation to the district, which was done in past years but hasn't been done recently, and consists of an opportunity to hear from superintendent, the board, the teachers' union, and other valuable district resources. They will also be trained in the district's core instructional focus areas of SEL, student engagement, and academic discourse. The revised induction curriculum will be focused on current classroom instruction. This will take place through cycles of reflection and feedback centered on district core instructional practices, exhibited through planning, lesson reflection and revision, and mentor observations, feedback, and response. The ultimate purpose being to cultivate the habits of career-long professional learning through ongoing reflection and collaboration. A third program is new administrator development support. Since 2014, Sacramento City Unified School District has supported aspiring and new administrators through the ASPIRE and LEAD programs. ASPIRE is for current Sacramento City Unified School District teachers who have demonstrated qualities of strong school leaders and are interested in pursuing administrative opportunities in the district. ASPIRE provides four sessions of leadership development, administrator shadow opportunities, and engagement with current Sacramento City Unified School District administrators. LEAD, Year 1 and 2, provides district coaches for first and second-year administrators. The coaches provide one-on-one coaching for new administrators and cohort sessions focused on leadership support and capacity building. The implementation of a co-teacher-student teacher preparation program, a focused and supportive new teacher and induction development plan, the nurturing of aspiring administrators, as well as personal coaching for new administrators, positions Sacramento City Unified School District to attract and keep talented people who are looking for strong training and support as they embark on a career in teaching and education. It will also enhance the vitality of the school district now and in the future. And it will ensure that students will have the high-quality teachers and administrators they need and deserve. This is, the budget overview shows the three-year cost. This year is a little less as we're only beginning to implement. The spring and full implementation will begin this summer and fall. A full breakdown of the budget is attached in your packet. As you know, this plan and the use of state dollars requires board approval. We aren't asking for your approval tonight, as this is a conference item. The item will come back to the board for action at a subsequent meeting. At this point, I'd like to invite your questions and comments.
Do we have any public comment?
Yes. Nikki Melas.
Evening again. We appreciate the work and thought that Ted Appel has put into developing the Educator Effectiveness Plan presented to you tonight. And we also want to commend Ted for his openness, transparency, and cooperation in working with SETA in developing this plan. We are very excited and believe that this work with student teachers and with induction support will help us recruit and retain highly qualified teachers in our district. We do, however, want to share one concern that we feel compelled to raise, and that is paying for the cost of administrative salaries out of the education effectiveness funds. We are confident that with Ted Appel's leadership, we will be able to jointly develop a model education effectiveness plan and expect that our issues related to the budgeting can be worked out with your support. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any more comment? No? Doesn't look like yours. Thank you so much. Item 10.3, Approve the 2015-16 Second Interim Financial Report and Budget Update. Mr. Castillo?
Good evening, Board President Pritchett, members of the board, and Superintendent Banda. The goal of our presentation is to provide a budget update and comply with Education Code 42130. Our overview for tonight will be discussing the ED Code 42130. We will discuss the second interim summary that is as of January 1 of this year. We will discuss our enrollment analysis. We will also discuss some buyer realities, such as increased costs in STIRS and PERS, and increased costs in healthcare costs and opillability. And also, we will discuss our multi-year projection for this year and the following two years, the fund balance, our fiscal condition, and next steps. What does ED Code Section 42130 says? It requires that we provide to the county office of education how the district certifies themselves, either as positive, qualify, or negative. Positive means we are able to meet our obligation for current year plus two years. Qualify, we are able to meet our obligations for current year, but we might not for the following two years. And negative, we are not able to meet obligations for this year. Tonight's certification is a positive certification. The next three slides, Mr. Michael Smith will go over.
Good evening to the board. So the next couple of slides is going to be an overview of the district's general fund budget as of January 31st. So we are anticipating $529 million in general fund revenues. And this graph gives the breakdown of where this money is coming from. So the majority, or about 66%, is funded through the local control funding formula, also known as LCFF. We also receive other state and federal funds, as well as local revenue, and that would include donations and local grants. The majority of funding for the district is unrestricted, and that means that it can be used for any legal purpose. So of the $310 million in expenditures, 87% or $271 million goes towards salary and benefits. And this includes healthcare costs and retirement. The next biggest expense is operational expenses, and this includes utilities. Restricted funds can only be spent for specific purposes, and they usually have legal or reporting requirements. So one of the biggest is Title I funds, and those must be used on low-income students. So with restricted funds, over half also goes to salaries and benefits. So the purple section there is for capital projects. An example would be making an improvement to a building. Over $51 million of that is through the Emergency Repair Program funds. And those can only be used for specific projects that have already been approved by the state. This graph combines unrestricted and restricted expenditures from the previous two slides, and it groups them by function. And function groups together related activities, and it is required for state reporting. So 69% of those expenditures is for instructional support. Of that, $291 million is for classroom instruction. $95 million goes to plant services, and that includes custodians and plant managers. $40 million for pupil services. This would include counselors, social workers, and nurses. $22 million for general administration, which is only 4%, one of the lowest in the county. Okay, so what has changed since the first interim was presented back in December? Well, we increased LCFF revenue by $5.4 million. This was due to the unduplicated count increasing more than anticipated. The unduplicated count is the number of low-income, English learner, foster youth, and homeless students, which provide additional funding through LCFF. You'll also note that other state revenue decreased by $2.9 million. This is due to Emergency Repair Program funds that were returned to the state. There were 29 projects that came in under budget, and those budgets were estimated way back in 2008. So any remaining funds from these completed projects must be returned to the state, and they cannot be repurposed for other projects. Okay, so unrestricted expenditures. The salaries and benefits were reduced by $3.6 million. This is for common core professional learning and savings from vacancies that will be utilized in the next fiscal year. You can also see $925,000 increase in services. This is for increased software implementation costs. There was restricted expenditures. You'll see the $2.9 million reduction there for capital outlay. That is the return Emergency Repair Program funds that I mentioned previously. The district has been in declining enrollment since before 2003-04. So this impacts the district's funding since the majority of our funding is based on average daily attendance, which is about 95% of enrollment. So to give you an idea, for this year, on average, one student generates about $8,900 through LCFF. So a decline of 112 students would be a loss of close to $1 million in funding. So in projecting the future years, we still assume declining enrollment will continue, although at a lower rate. We must continue to plan for increasing retirement costs. STIRS contributions will increase by $4.6 million next year. PERS contributions will increase by $785,000. So what do all these rate increases mean? Well, basically, in five years, close to 20% of salaries will go to retirement. And by, as noted on this slide, by 2017-18, the increases for the retirement contributions will have doubled since 2013-14. So in addition to retirement, healthcare continues to increase. And this graph shows the projected total costs for healthcare and retirement contributions. As you can see, healthcare is the biggest expense by far. So these costs are expected to increase by over $44 million by 2019-20, in four years. Another reality is the number of retirees receiving health benefits is almost the same as active employees. Back in 2013-14, 48% of those receiving benefits were retirees, and that number has continued to increase. So we know that statutory costs, such as health and retirement, will continue to increase. So that red line in this graph shows the projected annual increases for these statutory costs. The blue line reflects the projected annual increases in LCFF funding. So for this current year, 2015-16, we received an increase of over $30 million from the previous year. However, you can see these increases go down dramatically each year. And this is because LCFF will be about 95% fully funded next year, so we won't be seeing these large increases that we've been seeing these last couple of years. So on the next slide, we're going to look at the numbers at fiscal year 2018-19, where you can see that the revenue increase actually dips below $5 million. So it's not even enough to cover these increases in the statutory costs. So in 2018-19, LCFF is projected to increase by only $2 million. And as you can see, the statutory costs are expected to increase about $10.5 million. So that's $8.5 million more expenses than revenue. And I will hand it off to Harado to talk about OPEP.
Thank you, Mike. OPEP, OPEPs are defined as post-employment benefits other than pensions. Our current OPEP costs are financed as pay-as-you-go. We've spent about $18.1 million in OPEP. So that's what we have as currently. So we ask ourselves a question. What do we will take to fund our opillability? So we ask, you know, a period from 20 to 50 years. So if we were able, we will be able to fund the actuarial opillability of $650 million over the period of 20 years, it would have to take $54.4 million a year. So now, let's increase that by additional 30 million, by additional 30 years to 50 years. That will take us $35.7 million a year to fund it. This is assuming a discount rate of 4.39%. We have, we asked tonight Kathy MacLeod. She is from Bigmore. She will be able to answer any questions regarding our opillability. She will join us at the end to answer any questions. So that our opillability, you know, we ask ourselves as well, how does our liability compare to other districts? Again, this information is provided from Bigmore, where they do actuaries throughout the state, throughout the country. So we have, we have the highest liability in California for the school districts, 280%. You might say, well, that's not the highest. Los Angeles is the highest. Yes, Los Angeles, I think, is like $10.9 billion. But compared to our size, to our payroll and our percentage, we have the highest. You know, you will notice Elgro is at 9%, and San Juan is at 36%. So how much funding do we have in our, in our OPE trust? We have this OPE trust, it was established for the purpose of providing retirement health benefits to SEOSD employees. We are one of 466 members in this trust that is managed by CalPERS. So we have our investment then. The good news is that we started, we have one back in 2013. We started with $3.7 million. And so through today, through February, we have a total of $21.4 million. So that's a significant increase. That is, that is great news. It's a great start. The bad news is that we don't have an ongoing plan, except for the $20 a month that is contributed by SETA members, equivalent to about $440,000. They are the only members, they are the only unit who is contributing to this, to this OPEP. I want to go back and, I want to show some, you notice the liability in here is $611 million, and then this one is $615. The difference is because back in 2012-13, we had $3.7 million. So our multi-year projections, what are, this is, our assumptions that are in your package. We are assuming a 6% increase in medical. We are assuming the increase in PERS and STIRS. Our class size reduction, this is something that is new. It was not in your first interim. Now, the class size reduction is in the multi-year projection for 2016-17. And we are also assuming a continued loss of ADA and a 2.5 compensation increase. So what does 1% increase mean for our Sac City and High School district? 1% is $3 million. So it's very simple math that we are not, we haven't settled with any other bargaining units yet. So if we settle for, for 2% is 3 times 2, that will be 6. If we settle by 5%, 3 times 5 will be 15. That's common core math for you. Show your example. So the obligations that we have already for 2016-17 is that the statutory costs required increases, plus additional committed expenditures, the biggest being class size reduction. By doing that, we have used all our new funding for the local control. So that leaves us that we need to go into our fund balance $2.6 million. So for our multi-year forecast, based on our assumptions that we just discussed, we could go in a matter of one year from being a surplus of $8.2 million to a deficit spending of $8.6 million. I want to spend a minute explaining deficit spending because this is very important. It's a big issue for us. Imagine that Mr. Michael Smith has a car payment. He has to make a car payment of $300 every month. And for some reason, he cannot make a payment in one month. And for some reason, he cannot make a payment in one month, so he has to dig into his savings. So he's able to make the payment, but for the following years, he has pretty much two choices, well, maybe, maybe three. He has to make more money to, to make his car payment ongoing, or he has to reduce other expenditures, or the third option is he would have to return the car, you know, because that's, he doesn't have a payment. So that's how our deficit spending, so we are talking 15, 16, we are okay. But in the following year, based on our projections, we, we need to be very careful. So our fund balance still requires still 2% is equivalent about 10.3 million dollars. It's, it's not enough, it covers about 10 days of payroll. Yes, the January payroll alone was 32.2 million dollars, and we still have the limitations they might come alive for SB 858. So our fiscal condition, we still, we still positive, you know, but we had to be, we had to be very careful. You know, this is the second year in a row since 2007, eight, that we, that we are positive. So we are not, you know, we, we know that we are not in the business of, of making a profit, we, we know that. But we need to be really, really careful to not, don't fall in qualify. You know, we could not afford those painful costs that we just incurred, yes, like three years ago, not, no long ago. So our next steps, of course, we will continue our discussion with Sacramento County Officer of Education. And this is, assumptions are based on the January budget, they will be revised based on the May, and the governors may revise. We need to follow the outcome process, that's the law. And we need to ensure that, that we have a balanced budget for the following two years. We, of course, we will provide the updates to the board, the parents and, and the community as we know. At this point, Mr. Smith and Kathy McLeod is available to answer any questions. Thank you for your time.
No public comment? All right, four comments. Vice President Hanson.
Well, very sobering news, especially on St. Patrick's Day night. And no one wants, no one wants that, but I suppose it is the reality. Let me ask, because this is the thing that's most concerning to me, if we can go to the slide of the OPEB liability. It showed the amounts, if, yeah, that slide, thank you. So let me make sure I understand this correctly. So our unfunded healthcare liability, 615 million. Now that, and then that would be reduced if we have approximately 21 million in the PERS account?
Yes, but this number starts July 2013, so that's why we use that, because that's the last official. But that could increase or go down, you know. Yes, is the, the funds that we have put, 21 millions, will bring the liability down. I don't really know until those numbers are running, and Kathy, you could speak up, you... Okay.
But we'll get that, I assume, sometime soon then.
Yeah, we are in the, I should say, we are in the process of doing that this year. It's a requirement that we do it for the, for our financial reporting. We didn't have to do it the last couple of years. But we are, we are in the process of doing it this year.
And then is the 21 million that's in our PERS fund so far, is that for all staff? All staff that we have promised the healthcare?
Yes, that's, yes, it is for the all staff, but there is a portion that we are required to put for SETA. The trust was open with intention for SETA, but CalPERS allows us to put for other members. We, we have a breakdown by bargaining unit.
So everybody's included in that?
Everybody's included in that, yes.
Right, so looking at this chart, so let me make sure I understand. So if we wanted to pay our unfunded liability in 20 years, just pretending like that was a mortgage, we would need to spend $54 million a year? Is that correct for 20 years?
I would like to ask.
To get to?
That's correct, at this discount rate. And it's, I guess one of the comments I would, would make is, is that making contributions to a trust for OPEB benefits is, is like having a super delegate. It's, it's worth more than the dollar contributed. Because when you, when we develop the cost this way, we're assuming that the liability is developed, recognizing that the district is going to only earn between the data, a future payment is due, and today, when we're valuing it, we're assuming that the earnings on that money is only, is going to be 4.39% per year. Now, in today's world, that seems like a great return. But over the long term, that's kind of been the norm of what your local agency funds might return. So that, then the liability itself becomes inflated and the cost itself required to set aside. So if, if you didn't set anything aside, or you, or if you set that money aside, but in reserve as opposed to in a trust, that's what you would have to do. The super delegate kind of concept comes in, in that if you segregate it in the trust, your investment options are opened up, the potential return is increased. So each dollar contributed to the trust as opposed to set aside and reserve does more for you, it will earn more money and turn around and actually require a lower contribution, which I actually developed here. So let me... For example, I did the 30-year, just as an analysis here. If we use this discount rate here, we are coming up with just under 44 million a year for 30-year period. If you invested that, say, in the CalPERS, OPEB trust, and you could assume that you earned 6.75% interest, which is less than the theory of what you're earning now, so somewhat conservative, that the actual contribution number goes down by 20%. So instead of really having to set aside 44 million a year, you might only have to put aside 35 million a year, because those extra dollars that you're putting in the trust work harder for you.
Right, great. And then let me also ask Gerardo, so a couple of slides later, you noted that the, I guess it was the OPEB trust contribution summary by year, that right now is the, am I correct, that the district so far, I mean, the contribution from the teachers $20 per month is, you know, 440,000 a year? Is there any other employee contributions going into that fund?
Not, not from the employees, only, at this point in time, it's only SETA who is, who is contributing.
And then we've put in one-time funds?
Yeah.
A few times during the last?
So this, this money has been from the one-time savings?
Right.
All the, from the, for the leadership of the board and the superintendent, you know, the money that we have been able to, to put aside from, from one-time revenues and savings.
Well, I'm glad that we did that, because otherwise we wouldn't have $21 million in there. But let me go back to the OPEB liability slide. Obviously, if we're only putting in 440,000 a year, but if we wanted to say pay it off in 40 years, we need to have 38 million per year. We're only 37,500,000 dollars short per year. So clearly, there's a gigantic chasm that exists there. And I fear that the promise that we've made and that our union leadership has made to our employees is not going to be able to be fulfilled if we continue on this path. And none of us might be here to reap the whirlwind of people who expect to have a lifetime medical benefit that they have planned on. And it won't be there. And if we don't solve this problem, we are all to blame for that collectively, you and us. So this absolutely must be something that's addressed now. So I appreciate the stark numbers. It's crystal clear to me that everything we do, we must address this going forward. And we have to do it in a partnership, or otherwise, the healthcare benefits will not be there, and this district at some point will be bankrupt. And as people well know, public employees will lose their healthcare benefits, their promise their pension, but courts have allowed healthcare benefits that are future obligations to be tossed out. So I hope everyone takes that to heart and wants to work together on solving this problem. The next slide, please, that also is an OPEB liability that compares us to other districts. I'll note that, you know, for, you know, we, sometimes Sac City wants to be number one, but we don't want to be number one in this slide. And we are number one. And that is the amount per capita that this district owes compared to 1,000 other school districts. The state has 1,000 school districts. We are the most underfunded in the entire state of California. That's what this slide tells me. If we were to pay for that benefit, it would be 280% of our payroll. No other district is close to that, not even Los Angeles. And we look at our neighbor just to the south, Elk Grove, theirs is only 9%. Why? Because the district worked cooperatively with the union leadership there, and they cleverly put together a plan to pay forward, so it didn't come out of current year budget. We need to do that. It's crystal clear. And that's why Elk Grove can probably pay more to their teachers and to their other employees than we can, because they don't have this albatross around their necks, and they did the right thing and bit the bullet a number of years ago, do interest-based budgeting, and they do a lot of different things that are very cooperative. And we need to move into that model of a cooperative, forward-looking relationship with our employees, or, you know, people are going to be in a world of hurt, and it'll be the people who've been promised a healthcare benefit, who it's not going to be there for. So, as I said, these are very sobering numbers. I appreciate you taking the time to put this together. The board is going to have to be very serious about addressing this. It's not going to go away. Future boards, obviously, kick the can down the road. You know, past, I mean, past board members kicked the can down the road, past union leadership kicked the can down the road. No one is without blame in this. But if we, we're only to blame us currently that are here today if we don't do something about it. So that's going to take us all working together. And I hope that we'll do that. I certainly pledge myself to do that and be cooperative and open and honest and transparent. We have to see these numbers, though, to understand, you know, that, like an alcoholic, you first have to admit you have a problem. If you want to do something about it, you're never going to solve the problem. So to me, this is something that's really important, that has to be addressed along with all the other important things that we have to do. So, thank you for this information.
Great, do we have any other board comment? No? Okay, I have some questions. Slide 15, I have some questions about dates and years, why it's like this. This one. Why on here are we using the last graph for 2013, 14, and not 14, 15?
Because thus, we were able to certify, we were 100% sure of those numbers. So no, we didn't have, we didn't do that for according numbers, we went away for the actuary. And, you know, we have, we have some numbers on data, I think it just showed that, the point that we are increasing, you know, from, from 2009 to 13, 14. That's, that's why we did that.
When will they be certified?
Say that again?
When, you said they need to be certified?
This, this, this year, you know, when we complete those, when we complete our actuary and those numbers that review, that's when we will do that.
So in your projection that has not been certified yet, does it look pretty accurate of being the same?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, based on retirement increases, we have a decline in enrollment. You know, the one difference is for the following year, you know, we went to class size reduction, you know, we are increasing, increasing teachers. So that might work a little bit the, the other way around, where, but it will not change much, you know, the, you know, we, our, we were saying that we have about 50/50 right now. That's what, that's what we said, yeah.
Okay.
We, we will use more than this one.
Okay. On slide 20, and to kind of go off what Member Hanson was asking, on here it shows that it, it's, the staff is giving $20 per month, but he was saying that something about SETA is putting in more. You said SETA is putting in more. Can you tell us what that amount is?
I think SETA is the only one who is, the only bargaining unit who is putting money on a consistent basis.
That's $20?
$20 a month. But, you know, $20 a month is equivalent to a year of about 440,000 a year.
I think that was my only question, actually. All right. That was my only questions that I had. I'll be, I want to meet with you later in regards to the budget or the, the numbers that we say haven't been certified yet. This is a conference action. Item 10, where in conference, can you get a motion taken to action? Yeah, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Perfect, we're in action. Any more comment? Thank you. For second, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10.4, approved resolution number 2876, noticeably off classified employees reduction in... Do we have public comment? Sorry, noticeably off classified employees reduction in force due to lack of funds or lack of work. Hi.
Hi, good evening, Board Member, Board President Bridgette, Superintendent Bana, and Board Members. We are here, may remember Suni Dwan, our employee relations director, to talk with you about classified layoffs. You will see some information similar to what we very quickly, I think, went through last time, in terms of the process. Employees that serve the district, of course, we know are very dedicated, and this is a difficult situation, difficult decision to make, but nonetheless, one that we have to, we have to bring to your attention for your approval. So with that, we regret that there are some recommendations that we're making to reduce some of our positions. Some of them are to reduce actual positions that are vacant, some are positions people are in, and some are just to reduce the portion of time, an hour, things like that. The one-stop staffing process, similar to what we shared before, is a time when budget, the school sites or departments, area assistant superintendent, and human resources get together in the same room, go through the same information here at the same time to hear how sites are deciding to move forward with their funding for the next year. So by doing this, we're able to get the full picture and support sites through their decision-making process. So with that said, we have, it's very tiny here, but you also have a second exhibit to look at that outlines the positions that we're looking to reduce. They're broken up, they're broken up by school sites, and as you can see, listing not only the location and the position, also the hours and the percentage of time, I think I did that, sorry. Separated by school site, central office, again, noting that some of them are just partial for hours. And, and finally, what is a very large portion of vacant positions that need to be closed through this process. So to that end, although it is difficult, and it was difficult for sites and departments as they considered the resources at hand and looked at their whole picture to come up with these recommendations, we do ask for your approval of the resolution. And we're here to answer questions.
That was fun. Do we have any public comment? No public comment? All right, Vice President Hanson.
Can you give me an example of some of the funding that we lost that necessitates us to make these reductions?
Certainly, some sites lost QEIA funding. There was a reduction in, in other categoricals. Sometimes some of these positions are connected to grants specifically, and at this point, there's no assurance that those grants are going to continue. So this allows us enough time to be able to meet statutory requirements in terms of notification.
Conspitate that some of these will come back, or do you think, I mean, because this is obviously a large, large list, so...
Not as large as in the past, but still, it is a significant amount. You know, we were really thoughtful as sites went through and made difficult decisions to identify where they needed to reduce. We then, at a leadership level, were able to look at positions that we know we will be filling, we know that we have maybe a more difficult time in recruiting and filling particular positions, so we, we kept those off.
So, Consey, you mentioned that some of these positions, these 69 FTEs, were unfilled already. So do you recall approximately how many of the 69 are vacancies?
Yes, and Cindy can maybe speak to it, but on the slide that is highlighted on the board right now, you can see the vacant subtotal, and it says 42 points, sorry, it's hard to read, 42.4250.
So that, so if I'm reading that correctly, approximately 36, 37 FTEs are actual human positions, touching actual humans, not vacancies.
Correct.
So almost half, well, more than half are vacancies, so we're not really affecting people, except that those positions will not, no longer be filled.
That is correct. And also, what accounts for the large number is that, that because I think sites and departments were so thoughtful, there are partial reductions. So as opposed to laying off the entire position or the entire person, it's, it's an hour or it's a half an hour off from what normally would be, which makes it look like more people, but not necessarily.
So the purpose of today's vote is to send out the preliminary notices or actual pink slips?
These are, these are actual.
These are actual notices, and as we receive new information such as grant funding coming through, at that point, we will send them a recension letter.
And then, will the may revise, might the may revise have an effect on that as well?
Yes.
Okay. So, I mean, in years past, we've, I think with our classifieds, but, I mean, in this category, we sent out as many as 10 times as much, 700, I think I remember my first year.
Yeah, I think in total, with our, with our certificated and classified, you're right, we had five, six years of very, very high numbers. And sometimes we are able to bring, a good number of times, we are able to bring them back, as was mentioned, because of retirement or resignation, or when we learned that funding has been restored.
Let's hope the may revise and the other information comes in in a timely manner. Thank you.
Member Royal?
Thank you, President Pritchett. So these are not general fund restricted or unrestricted funds? These are all strictly grants? Is that what I hear you saying?
For the majority of the part, yes. There may be a clerical position at one of our elementary schools that's being reduced. That is coming out of general funds, but that position should have been reduced from general funds last year, but we continued it on this year. And through the one-stop staffing process and reviewing the enrollment, that is being reduced, not eliminated, but reduced.
Better. And then, so the, the list is not made up of decisions from either the administration office, central office here, or the site saying, we don't need this position, so if we need to cut, we need to cut here? These are decisions that are because of outside funding or extra funding beyond general fund? My point being is, I just want to make sure that if some, how many of these decisions are being made out of decisions to reduce the budget and what kind of feedback we got from our sites? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Yes, so through the one-stop staffing process, sites were very much involved, right? They, they are bringing forward their needs, and it's a combination of budget and HR and those sites or those departments working together, given whatever the projection is, whatever their needs are, that those things can be met. Sites also work closely with their site councils to determine direction and maybe what needs to be reduced. But a number of these in the past have been able to be restored just based on the categorical funds being identified.
Got it. Okay.
I mean, grant, the grant, the grant funds kind of being renewed or identified.
And, and the last comment that I would like to say is that while they, it's a reduction of two hours, I mean, these are people that, for the most part, have been part-time within the district, or they don't have a full-time position, and these are not necessarily the people that are making the most money in the district, yet we're cutting an hour here or two hours there. For them, financially, it means a lot, right? But also, just wanted to kind of highlight to the rest of my fellow board members that many times, this is not necessarily the, the most expensive, but yet they provide an extremely valuable service to the district. And so, obviously, you know, we need to do what we need to do financially, but I really want, you know, to be highlighted that many times, you know, it's not necessarily their, whatever reductions we are putting here are not necessarily the most, they're, they're not as big as we might think, looking at the list, given the fact that, you know, these are not necessarily the people that are making the most money within the district, yet they provide a tremendous amount of, of value. So this is something that I would like to consider, you know, when we start talking budget, you know, figure out how do they fit into the bigger picture, because, you know, it, it, an instructional aide here, or, or while it may just be a place who are here in the paper, it means a lot to a school site, yet the savings are not necessarily the most tremendous savings either, right? So it's something just to keep in mind, and hopefully, not only as we get some of the funding restarted and we're bringing back, but also as we start talking about our priorities, you know, we can put them in balance as well. Thank you.
I'll be brief. I had a very specific question. So two of the revisions that you're proposing are to foster youth services. One for a youth services program associate that was a full-time, then for an instructional aide. I, I believe that last year, we also, when we were reviewing our budget, came upon some open positions with foster services. And I'm wondering, were these dollars that had been allocated through grant fundings, as Member Royo talked of, or are these really targeted dollars that would be part of our local control funding formula? And if so, you know, I'm concerned that we would make a move to eliminate those or reduce those positions' time.
I was listening, I'm not, I'm not sure, because I did not, I'm not sure, but I know that from foster youth, we were receiving some funding from, from the state that was going through the county, that it was going, eventually will come to us, that was going to be reduced, and I was wondering, if that's what it is, where we don't, we don't, we don't know exactly what will happen yet? I, I don't know, not at all. So we will, we could research, I can get back to you.
So in one of my conversations with staff who attended the one-stop staffing as we were reviewing the data before we took it here tonight, it was confirmed it is grant funding. Foster youth is primarily grant-funded positions within that department. They did review their staffing line by line for each position, that they were willing to take their chances and calculated risks on, assuming that the grant funding would come through, but there weren't all positions that they were able to make that calculated risk. So for meeting the, the education code and timeline-wise, they were added onto the list for today.
So I, I appreciate that further explanation. You know, when I look at the goals of local control funding formula, it's to provide services to targeted populations that would be traditionally left behind. And so I would hope, as we're calculating our budget and prioritizing, when a situation comes up like this, where grant funding falls through, instead of assuming a calculated risk and eliminating a position, we would say, consistent with the priorities of LCFF, let's figure out a way to reorganize our monies to continue to offer this, this position and these services.
Thank you. Member Barry?
Yeah, I had a question similar to Jesse Ryan's, but instead of with foster youth, I was wondering about the four youth development positions on, just because that's the department under, I think, that's some advisory councilors. And I was just wondering, is that grant money, or that's grant money?
I didn't know. Okay. I think you were finished. We have a public comment. Mr. Ross?
We have one comment from Enoch Young. I apologize, it's for the next item.
Oh, okay. Okay. I just have a quick question. So thank you for the not-so-great news. I know it's not personal. But I, I do have a question, like, you know, looking through this and seeing so many school sites listed, I just want to make sure that we, you know, before we went and asked school sites to make cuts, or they came to us and said they can make cuts, that we're looking here within our district office for, for cuts as well, and are any of these included from our district office?
Yeah, all, all sites and departments go through, should be going through one-stop staffing to identify reductions based on, you know, their, their allocations and the budgets. So it's not specific just to school site.
So by looking at this chart, how would I be able to tell which ones came out of the district office?
On the central office list, this one is, that's here, you can notice that there are, there are a couple up there from our ARNE department, integrated community services.
All of those were out of the district office?
These are the central office sites.
Oh, every single one of them?
On, on this particular page, yes. The first one is school sites, then central office, and then vacancies.
Okay. All right, thank you. That was my only question. I need a, this was a conference action, so. I didn't even ask for it yet, but thanks, guys. All say aye? Abstention, or opposed abstentions? All right, we're in action. Can I get a motion for? Thank you. I got a motion in a second. All in favor, say aye? Opposed? Abstentions? Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right. Item 10.5, approve the multiple-subject elementary with, is it back one? BCLAD Mandarin variable term waiver. It's you again.
I know. Sorry.
I got you all night.
Actually, we're here to ask for your approval to help fill one of our, our difficult-to-fill, our very much-needed positions. Specifically, this one is at William Land Elementary School involving the Mandarin immersion program. The California Commission on Teacher Credentialing requires board authorizations for certain types of waivers. We came to you at the beginning of the year with a declaration of need to identify the scope of potential waivers we might need. This one is, is connected to multiple-subject teaching credential with a BCLAD waiver in Mandarin. It will enable the teacher to fill in this difficult position while she is working towards her full credential in service of the students. The, goodness, the candidate that we're bringing forward for consideration with this particular waiver has her bachelor's, as you can see, has experience teaching in private school as a Mandarin teacher, works closely with the William Land community and school right now as an instructional aide and in tutoring students in Mandarin. She qualifies for a 30-day subpermit. However, as you know, those currently limit time in a specific classroom. So this is a, a great example of a potential pipeline, right, that we're looking to build, working with our, in, in this case and in others, strong language speakers to fill some of our high-need positions, allowing them support, the time to do what they need to do to complete coursework. So the staff recommendation is to approve the waiver to allow this position to be filled, and the teacher an opportunity to work towards her full credential.
All right. I believe we have a public comment.
And I forgot to say, with me is our HR Director, Roxanne Finlay.
Oh. All right. And I have.
Now we have Mr. Young.
Good evening, school board. I'm a parent at William Land Elementary School, and my daughter is actually one of the students in the classroom which we're, we're seeking this waiver. And so, just to kind of give you a, a brief snippet, it's, it's been a long, long journey of working very hard with Consey and Roxanne here, and, and Mr. Hanson and Ms. Wu on just really trying to figure out solutions of, of how to address the teacher shortage. And so I think with that said, I am very appreciative of the flexibility from the district, as well as the hard work that they have put in, as we're continuing to try to seek solutions on trying how to fill these positions. And so I think we've made some significant headway, but this is a significant piece and step towards us getting to where we need to be. So I'm very much supportive of this request to grant the waiver. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any board comment? Member Wu?
Thank you, President Pritchett. You know, I've been pushing really, really hard to make sure that we have a, that this Mandarin immersion program at William Land is robust, and really is preparing these group of children for a worldwide future, especially since a third of the world's population speak Mandarin. And so I, we have been really, really working hard trying to get qualified teachers into our classroom, and we've been coming up short, and we've been filling with some Mandarin-speaking substitutes as well, and thankful for their willingness to come back and help us, although only for finite periods of time. But they come back nevertheless, because they love our children as well as we do. So I'm going to move and urge adoption of this exemption for the BCLAD Mandarin variable term waiver.
From Superintendent?
Thank you. I, I just want to add to what Board Member Wu said, you know, there's an extra challenge in, in finding Mandarin-speaking teachers, right? And even though there's a potential for us to be able to go overseas, you know, we have contacts with folks in China, the teachers there, we keep running into this, this obstacle of getting through the federal government, getting through the immigration, getting through visa, and I don't know, there's no solution, I don't think, that's coming our way. But any opportunity we get, when we have someone that's really qualified but doesn't quite meet the, the requirements, it's a, it's a great opportunity for us to keep a qualified person in front, that speaks Mandarin, in front of our students.
All right. So this was a conference action item, and so I had a first and a second for conference. All in favor, say aye? Opposed? Abstentions? All right, we're in action.
Move the action.
Thank you. Thank you. I got a first and a second. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Perfect. Thank you so much.
One down.
Okay. Item 11.0, business and financial information reports. 11.1, we received everything. 12.0, future board meetings, April 3rd here and April 7th here. We have to go into, we're going to close this session and go back into closed session.
You can now adjourn into closed session. After closed session, you would have to adjourn out of it into open session. You can do it in the Washington Room. When you're finished with the closed session, you can announce open session for anyone who wants to stand by in that vestibule, and you won't have to come back down here.
Okay.
So I think you need to have a motion to adjourn into closed session.
We want you to jump out. Student Member Barry, would you like to adjourn us back into closed session? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Great. We're adjourned and opposed. Thank you so much.
One down.
Okay. Item 11.0, business and financial information reports. 11.1, we received everything. 12.0, future board meetings, April 3rd here and April 7th here. We have to go into, we're going to close this session and go back into closed session.